The pre-agenda meeting for the Iron County Board of Commissioners for Tuesday, September 21, 2021, and move down to the, any adjustments to the agenda?
Thank you, Chairman Mallory. We do have one addition under administrative matters, and it's before you on the bench, and that's item 8.13, which is a budget amendment number 10 to receive foster care funds.
All right, number 13. Any additional amendments that are anticipated? Okay, we do have the presentation recognition of the Stony Point Volunteer Fire Department's Ladies Auxiliary. And Jean, Scotty, were y'all gonna have something to say?
I just want to compliment them and say a few words on behalf of the chief thanking the other departments that assisted them in the flooding, something brief.
All right. Well, I've got a certificate, you know, I think they got something, I think they may have gotten something from the state.
That's what, yeah, that's what it was, state award.
Well, we've got a certificate of recognition to give to them as well, so good to go. No appointments before the board, no public hearings this evening. I guess we dealt with as many as we could last time. Administrative matters appropriate for the consent agenda? Beth, could you tee those up?
Absolutely. Thank you, Chairman Mallory. The first item was a request from Emergency Communications for approval of Budget Amendment Number 9 to appropriate $8,014 of NC 911 funds for Statesville Police Public Safety Answering Point. And Ms. Miller's not here yet, so we might, she was gonna come and present this, but she may have gotten tied up. So is it okay if we move this to the bottom and circle back to this one?
Sure.
The next item is a request from the library for approval to accept in North Carolina Humanities American Rescue Plan Humanities Project Support Grant in the amount of $20,000 to digitize 487 reels of microfilm. Ms. Julie Moore is here to make this presentation to the board.
Good evening. The library would like to request approval to accept a grant from the Humanities Council. We will be digitizing 487 reels of microfilm that contain will, birth, death, land grant records, and it's approximately 585,000 images that'll be accessible to search with optical character recognition software on the library's website.
That was done a while back.
We were, we applied for an LSTA grant back in February from the State Library. We weren't awarded that grant for July 1st, so we sought other funding opportunities, and we were able to secure funding through the NC Humanities Council.
So this is a really good adage of if at first you don't succeed, try, try again. So, and Julie is, she has done that.
Well, pound for pound, the library puts in for more grants than any other department that I'm aware of, other than Parks and Rec, which is, I guess y'all are in a competition. But you're very successful, both, both departments in getting grants, so.
Thank you.
Okay, any questions for Ms. Moore?
Just a brief one. I was wondering if this was geared at older documents or more current? Do you have a timeframe you plan on working with?
Yes, these are microfilm reels that we have from the State Archives, some of them going back to approximately 1832.
Oh, wow.
So people doing their historical research for genealogy will be able to have access to these documents through the library's website and search by name, which will also save staff a lot of time. So if someone comes in inquiring to locate materials, instead of going through the reels, reel by reel, you would just be able to type in the person's name or keywords, and it would pull up kind of like a Google search.
Okay.
All of the hits of the digitized images that had those words in them.
Thank you.
So how will you be indexing these?
They will be indexing these, I'm assuming based on, by year, Joel and Joel Reese and then Shelley Taylor will be working on creating the indexes once the images are scanned. Probably, like I said, probably based on year to match the microfilm reels, so people would know which, which year that they might be looking for.
Or do they have a, a state database to go to to find out what's on which microfilm we'll reel to look at?
They, I believe they already have indexes that go along with those reels that they've received from the State Archives. So I think they'll be kind of transposing those into the database. We have, this grant didn't require any matching funds, but we had already budgeted matching funds that we'll use to purchase the repository with IT, so that we'll be able to store all the documents on there and use that optical character recognition software and create the indexes.
Well, whatever ability you have to load as much information in there as possible on a search, you know, grantees, grantors, dates, description of the tract, you know, people are coming at this in terms of research from, you know, with one piece of information, and it may not be just, you know, what year it was or anything else. They're just trying to find a way to get into the records and sort through the records. So when you have a, just a mass of records on one microfilm, that's a, that's a bear to search. So anything we can do to give more touch points or points of entry into these documents is gonna be helpful. I talked to the, you know, you'll be working closely, I'm sure, with the genealogy folks. Okay. Any further comments or questions? Consent?
Consent.
Thank you.
Thank you, Marv.
Circling back to the first item, the request from Emergency Communications for approval of Budget Amendment Number 9 to appropriate $8,014 of NC 911 funds for Statesville Police Public Safety Answering Point. And Ms. Miller is here to make this presentation to the board.
Good evening, Katie.
This, this item is a request to approve Budget Amendment Number 9. It's to appropriate $8,014 for Statesville as a secondary piece app. We are a pass-through for this money. We, we collect it from the board and forward it to Statesville for their use.
Any questions? Consent?
Consent.
Consent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item is a request from ICATS for approval of a multi-jurisdictional and agency memorandum of understanding for the 5307 formula update. And Mr. Bradley Johnson is here to make this presentation to the board.
Good evening.
How are you, sir?
Good. This, this request is something that we've been working on for about three years on getting this formula updated. And it's, after a lot of complaining and, and persistence at saying that the formula wasn't correct and that it wasn't being shared equally, we were able to get enough traction with the CRTPO to have a task force developed to then be able to look at the formula. And so with the task force, they, they looked at five or six other areas in the country that were in similar geographic dilemmas like we are in with a larger urbanized area, but then stretching out to the rural area as well, and came up with five different formulas. All five of the new formulas, we, we were gonna be receiving significantly more funds than we were in the original old formula. But we were able to come to an agreement on the formula number five, which I think I attached that in the documentation. And so we will be getting, we'll be able to receive almost a little more than double of what we have in the, the previous years. That money can be, there is a cap of what we can use that for, for operating expenses, but the rest of it could be used for capital or planning or, or other, other needs. There, there is a cap of what we can use for operating, which is, I think about $350,000 a year. So, but it will allow us to, to grow our capital needs and be able to keep our balance correct for our urban-rural split.
So this is a, hit the reset button. This doesn't go back and recapture anything in the past.
It does not, it, but it does do the 2021 formula because that money had not been dispersed yet. So it will take our 2021 formula, or allotment will come off of the new formula.
And we've got this all in writing?
We do, yes. And it's been agreed upon. I mean, CRTPO signed off on it. They originally signed off on it in July, but they, there was some errors in the contract, and they did not have us, all the parties listed. So we had them go back and edit that. So we got the revised version of it first of September.
And Union County is also a beneficiary of this.
They are. They, they are gonna be benefiting equivalent to us, so almost, almost additional 50%.
Have we ever gotten any of the revenue that's in the rears that we've been fighting for, for years?
They, I mean, they, they, they say that that was, you know, that was developed, I mean, from the original formula that was agreed upon in 2014. And so it, you know, none of that is, has been, you know, conferred over or whatnot, because that, that money had already been allocated with the split letter from the CRTPO.
There were differences in recollection about the intent, but there's nothing in writing, and a number of the individuals that were involved had retired. And so.
So we got it this time.
We, we got it fixed going forward, beginning this year. I do want to mention that Michael Johnson, former mayor pro temp and council member for Statesville was a, and former chairman of the CRTPO, was a big help in terms of helping to develop and shepherd these different options and be able to explain them, and then get a, a very fair result. So it was a, a good tag team match, and appreciate all the time that you put in. This has been the longest gestating issue, one of the longest out there, so.
So the revenues we thought we were owed, that Commissioner, former Commissioner Robertson was, when he was on CRTPO, fighting for is just gone. Promise to make this new formula make up for that.
Yeah, I mean, the, the new, the new formula doesn't make up for that, really. I mean, because it, you know, the other was money that, that we earned. It just wasn't being divided among, you know, I mean, the feds said that we earned the money, but the CRTPO didn't, didn't see it that way. And so they, you know, under the formula that was agreed upon in 2014, that's why, you know, it was being dispersed and how it was.
I just don't understand how these entities have nothing in writing and no record of who's owed what, whom all this time we've been arguing over revenues that we thought were owed, and they don't, they weren't, I don't know that they were disputing them, they just hadn't paid them. Correct?
Well, I mean, they.
They disputed it.
Yeah, I mean, they, they were disputing it. I mean, they were saying that we signed the agreement in 2014, and that that's what the, you know, how the money was being dispersed because of that agreement. We were saying that agreement was, even though we, you know, someone did sign it in 2014 for Idaho County, we did not think that it was fair and equitable. And so that's what we've been.
But we got what they think we were owed or not?
We, what we received is what the agreement said that we were to receive, that we, that we signed and agreed to. So it wasn't that they were holding money from us that, that was not contractually supposed to go to us. We got what the agreement said we were supposed to get. What we were saying is, we don't agree with this formula, and we're asking for the formula to be revisited, which is what this does. This new agreement revisited the formula, came out with a new calculation that we determined to be more fair, which we received a little bit over 50% more, and now this new agreement is memorializing that new formula. So I don't want anybody to think that, that we had an agreed-upon amount and we weren't getting it. We were getting what the formula said. We were saying, we want that formula recalculated because we believe that we are due more. And based on the federal formula, and when you look at that, we were eligible for, for much more funding than what we're receiving. So that's why we have the new formula now.
Okay. My recollection was different, that we weren't getting something we were owed because they, they were just behind paying that. So apparently that wasn't accurate.
The, the discussion was how far back the request went to request a new formula, and how long it took to get to the new formula.
Okay. Now, that was the piece where there was differing recollections.
Correct.
And a gap in, because it wasn't in the original agreement, but it was discussions that were held with folks in good faith that after some of them left, current staff said, well, we just don't have anything to hang around.
Yes, we've got it fixed.
At any rate, there were several different interpretations that this could have gone, and we got a pretty favorable result, fair, equitable for the, this year and the future.
So we're where you want to be now.
Yeah, I mean, we're in a lot better place. I mean, you know, and that's what, all five of the formulas, you know, that were presented show that the original formula that we agreed upon was, was not very, you know, not a good deal for us. So, but we, we believe that this number five is the best one for us as, as we grow, because it, you get rewarded for your efficiencies, where some of the other formulas didn't really, you know, you got rewarded for miles, but not actually passenger miles, which is two different, you know, two different things in the way they should be looked at.
I think the school system gets reimbursement on their routes, and the efficiency of them make a difference as well.
Yeah.
Gotcha.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Thank you for the work on that, whoever, everybody that did it. Glad to get that inked on paper.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Consent?
Consent.
Thank you very much, Bradley.
Mr. Johnson also has the next item, which is a request from ICATS for approval to call for a public hearing on October the 5th, 2021, at 7:00 PM in regard to transportation grants for fiscal year 2023.
Okay, Bradley.
I mean, that's, that's very straightforward, what it is there.
That is what it is?
Yeah, we're, we're calling for the public hearing to be able to have it on October the 5th.
Okay. Any questions, comments? Consent?
Consent.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. The next item is a request from Solid Waste for approval to use budgeted overtime funds to hire an additional full-time equipment operator driver. And Mr. Teddy Bowler is here to make this presentation to the board. And I think this is the first time Teddy has presented to the board as the Solid Waste Director.
This is my first time. Good afternoon.
Welcome.
HR hat and putting on his solid waste hat.
Congratulations.
Thank you. So the Solid Waste Department is looking for approval to use the budgeted overtime funds to fund an additional position in Mooresville, at our Mooresville Transfer Station. This, this site has had the same budgeted position since at least dating back to 2008, when I began. And we all know there's been substantial growth in Mooresville, and we are responsible for transport, transporting that waste and recycling to various places. So we're looking, we're asking to move $35,600 from our existing budget of overtime to fund this position. In return, I think that we will, I know that we will increase employee morale. They're working late nights, many nights, to try to make sure that that waste is moved, increase safety for the employee and, and the public, and reduce burnout for the employee, employees.
Will that negatively impact your budget, or do you need that?
No, sir. I think the majority of this overtime was coming from this Mooresville Transfer Station.
Right.
And it was going mainly to those drivers and equipment operators who have to stay late to load and transport that waste to the landfill at the end of the day.
Tell them we appreciate all you guys do, and lots of good feedback from your department. And you, thank you for everything.
We're probably saving money by not paying overtime, by hiring a full time.
Right, right.
Yeah, sounds good.
And not just saving the money, but the, the morale, exhausting our current staff. It's, it's really overtaxing the staff. They are working, the hours that they're working to try to keep up.
Yeah, they're, they're accruing overtime. A lot of holidays we work when the rest of the county is closed, and they accrued up what we call floating holiday time to be used at another time. They feel bad for trying to take off a day, because they're gonna leave the rest of the team kind of hanging in a sense. So we have, most of those employees there have floating overtime that's, you know, in abundance of 40 hours, that they, they really do need to take some time off and get rest.
Hard to let them take off when you're working overtime, isn't it?
It's hard to do that at the current level of staffing.
Yes, the problem with our county folks coming to use our facilities, is that abated somewhat, or is that still?
I don't have any concrete data on that. I would say that we do a good job of checking decals and those type of things to try to make sure that people from outside the county are not using the facility. We use our enforcement officer on a random basis at all of our sites to make sure to check vehicles and that type of thing. So, but I don't have any concrete data to say what percentage, you know, of waste, that type of thing, so.
This was an interesting chart that you included discussing the population growth in Mooresville. And just bring to everybody's attention that it looks like there's just this sort of incremental growth for a number of years, but that's, that's 10 years of, of growth, whereas the first three bars are a decade apart. So from 1990 to 2000, Mooresville grew from a little less than 10,000 to, by about 10,000 folks, a little less than 10. The next decade from 2000, 2000 to 2010, they grew by about 15,000. And then, for the next decade, from 2010 to 2020, grew about 5,000, all right? So that was 10, 15, 5. And then this year alone, this year alone, not the decade, but they've grown population-wise almost 10,000. So that really puts it in perspective about how this past year, with all the construction and the construction waste, and then just household waste and all that, we're clearly at a position where that, that station is overwhelmed, and we know that. And we're looking at options. Okay. Well, any other questions or comments?
No, just let your people know, we appreciate them.
Consent?
Consent.
Okay, and Teddy still got, still, still got the next item?
Teddy does have the next item, and that's a request from Solid Waste for approval of a lease for the 901 Convenience Center site.
This was a current lease that was in place with a former owner, Dalton Campbell. This property at 901 was sold to Mr. Ronnie Taylor recently. And so this lease is just to be put in place with the new owner. The money has already been paid for the year for this lease. The new owner understands that there will be no more funds paid for this year. The new owner understands that there will be no more funds paid for this year. Basically what we're doing is changing the ownership in this lease.
This is a one-year lease?
About a three-year term, yes, sir.
Gives us some time.
Okay. Any additional questions? Consent?
Consent.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Teddy.
Thank you. The next item is a request from the Health Department to waive the competitive bidding process for the purchase of a mobile health unit and approval of Budget Amendment Number Six of $747,500 using Medicaid maximization funding for the purchase of the mobile health unit to be utilized for COVID-19 response and the provision of other public health services in the community. Ms. Henson is here to make this, this presentation to the board.
Good evening.
Good evening, Teddy.
Y'all are doing well. July the 20th, I was before you and you approved the purchase of the mobile health unit with Medicaid maximization funds, which are funding that we have earned. And tonight we are seeking approval to waive the competitive bidding process and purchase the mobile health unit through a nationwide government cooperative purchasing program called HGAC. The advertising criteria to waive the bidding process has been met with the assistance of David Sifford, who is our new county purchasing officer. I'm also asking for approval to accept the quote that was received from Matthews Specialty Vehicles in Greensboro. The unit itself would cost $712,879 to build. We are requesting a 5% contingency to be included in the budget amendment for a total of $747,500. Matthews Specialty Vehicles, they make mobile health units for clients around the world. And they actually are in Greensboro. We visited the site. We were able to tour the, the actual factory. We met with a healthcare account executive who specializes in mobile health units. And they have built mobile health units for Cone Health, Wake Med, and Contegra. Actually, Contegra's dental health units were built by Matthews Specialty Vehicles. And one thing I wanted you to notice on the, the proposal, it includes a $71,426 reduction. And this is from the item number that we are purchasing through this HGAC. In other words, this was equipment that we did not need. It was a standard price. And an example of that is a remote satellite. If this was a law enforcement entity, that would be included. We don't need that. So they deducted that $71,426 off of that. In your packet, you also received the actual drawings based upon specifications. And Susan Johnson, our Director of Nursing and Clinical Services, really worked closely with Matthews Specialty Vehicles to make sure we were getting everything we wanted. And so that we could not only do COVID services, both of the exam room chairs, we have the ability to do clinical services or dental health services. So we were thinking ahead in what we, all we might want to do.
Could you share what the capacity of that is in terms of patient capacity, assuming you're using all the different stations?
It will absolutely depend upon the services. If we are doing sexually transmitted disease clinic or family planning clinic, we would utilize the private rooms. And where, again, we would be protecting confidentiality. If we are doing an in-and-out vaccination, like flu vaccine, in one door, out the other, we could whip through very, very quickly. There's also an awning that comes out with a television that kind of opens up, as if you were looking at that, it opens up so that we could be educating outside under the awning, they could get the education they needed, for instance, for COVID vaccine and zoom through and get vaccinated. So there's so much potential, it, but it really depends on the services. Are we doing a dental cleaning on a pediatric client that might take a little longer? The counseling that we're doing with the service, so, but there is two private rooms. And then in the middle, you see that's the laboratory. That's where we have all of the freezers, the refrigerator units. We have the restroom that they can pass through if they're doing a urine sample, that we can check the urine sample. So it, it's designed in a manner that, in fact, there's a, a chair lift for individuals that are in a wheelchair. So we are designing it in a way that depending upon the clinic and services, if it's something simple like a flu shot, we could have several individuals through at one time.
Who's going to be driving this?
Well, I don't know. Susan, Susan says she's going to retire and get her CDL license. I don't know. But it, they are very, very nice. We're excited about it. Of course, it could take up to 11 months to build. Quite honestly, a lot of organizations have received COVID dollars and are using that. We just wanted to be able to use ours for clinical services outside of COVID so that it's not just sitting in the yard at the health department. Whereas, you know, it might be going to the Boys and Girls Club and doing dental examinations or go into an industry and doing flu shots. So, you know, we, there's many opportunities with it.
Any questions for Jane?
Yeah, I have, we, at the other meeting, we talked about this. I thought we were going to get some information to, to look into it a little bit before we made up our minds. And, and this is one item that I've gotten several phone calls about from the public. And we're having a meeting the 30th, I believe, and to talk about a lot of different things. And personally, I would rather table it to then for us to discuss it more.
Okay.
That's my opinion.
I guess my only concern is, I love the idea of being mobile. On paper, it looks fantastic.
Mm-hmm.
Have you been able to speak with anyone who owns one that's been on the road for any length of time?
Contegra's had their dental clinic for several years and they actually go to school and do dental services. And that's been a barrier for us because we can't do that.
Do they have the same make and model? I'm actually kind of, it's, okay, that was where I'm trying to drive the point, I guess, if you will.
These are these custom coaches. I mean, there's many different types, but what they particularly have, what Wake has, Wake Med has, and what Cone Health has are exactly like this. Now, the inside might be designed differently.
Right. My basically, yeah, my current concern is I just want to make sure that with any dollars being spent, that you get what you pay for, that you're not being slowed down by any mechanical drawbacks and things such as that. So I guess that's just, I want to see y'all be able to not have the, any kind of mechanical headaches. I want to see this roll out and keep rolling, literally, because it's only as good as if it cranks and runs and goes.
That's right. And we have asked about all the warranties and, you know, we've been given that information. And Commissioner Brown, if there's anything specific that you would like from us, additional information that I can get for you?
Because, you know, the one thing is what people don't understand is, you know, is a lot of these things have, the, the motor's the biggest expense. And, you know, they put Mercedes in a lot of them. Everybody thinks, well, Mercedes is best. That's the worst. That is, in, in these vehicles, Mercedes is the worst. You want to go with a Cat or Cummings. And, but, but, you know, when people hear Mercedes, they think, oh, it's a great vehicle, that it's, you know, it's a good engine. It is not. I mean, you don't want that in your airplane. You don't want that in a motor coach. And they're the most expensive to work on and they, they break down more than the rest of them. So that's where I'm at. I want to see the breakdown of the whole vehicle to make sure we're getting our money's worth and, because maintenance is where this is going to come back into this group here.
Yeah. Would it be helpful if you choose to wait until the 30th and discuss it if we had the account executive? Because there's going to be questions that I probably can't answer.
That would.
I'm good with that.
Available, whether it's by telephone possibly, if you would like to do that.
To whatever extent we can refine the questions ahead of time.
Right.
So that they can respond with the appropriate.
We just had printout and a breakdown on it.
The, the calls that I'm getting, we need to do a better job and explain when you're going to spend this money, why we're using the med money instead of the ARP. You, you explain that as far as you're limited. So I think we need to make that point public. And then let's name and spell out some specific uses of things you would be able to use it for and the pros and cons for that, whether or not you could use it for schools. You know, to go to different schools and do like dental things or other types of, you know, vaccinations, whether it be for teachers or staffing or whatever. I think the problem is we don't have enough information out there of how we're going to pay for it, why we're doing it that way instead of another way, the different types of uses. What some people worried about, oh, it'll be a shiny toy in the beginning and then it'll set over there in the parking lot at some point. And you've guaranteed that's not going to happen. I don't think it would. But I think if we can spell out to the public, you know, all the different uses, the pros and cons, the, the revenue savings, the logistical challenges that helps you with setting up or taking down vaccination clinics that you have done, the staff savings you may have in that, just give us a lot more information because we've got people looking at the price tag and they don't have the relevant information that justifies the investment. Does that make sense?
We did talk about a lot of that in July.
We did, we did. But, but again, we're at a 5:00 meeting. It's not publicized. It's in amendments. So I think at some point, we're going to have to do a really good job of explaining the who, when, whys, and wheres and how that benefits the, the working public and the taxpayers. Because that's the calls we're getting.
Well, and if I can just interject one thing, Commissioner Haupt, you're spot on because one of the concerns is, is that it's a shiny toy and that it sits in the parking lot and it's not used.
Right.
That is the whole and sole purpose that we're not using COVID funds for this.
That's right.
Because if we use COVID funds for this purchase, we can only use it for COVID.
Right.
That's it. We cannot use it for dental clinics. We cannot use it for flu shots. We cannot use it for, for any other purpose other than COVID. So it literally would sit in the parking lot and would be a waste. That is why the Health Department came back and said, this is such an amazing asset. It is going to be underutilized if we use this, this funding for it. We have got so many other uses and it can help check so many boxes and get us out in the community. One of the, one of the difficulties the Health Department has, getting out in the community and broadening their reach and providing services, a lot of the community that needs those services cannot get to the services. So this will take the services to the community that, that does not have that means or mechanism to get to them. So that is the whole reason. And, and we could use COVID funding for this purpose, but it can, it can only be used for COVID. And we're hoping, we're hoping COVID becomes manageable and it's not on our forefront for ever and ever and amen. So this, to make sure that this, this asset is utilized beyond COVID, that's why they're recommending to use MedMax funds for it.
That was it.
For that sole purpose.
That's some of the questions we're getting is, you know, is it cheaper to provide transportation with ICATS or other things to get them to the Health Department? So we've got to make sure the public knows the, the benefit and the investment of this mobile unit compared to providing transportation to the end users to get to you. And, you know, I know in July, I think I was one of the ones that asked about using ARP money. And I think you were going to look into waivers or something, but we had the, we had the limitations to that. But, but it was, it was just a thought, right? We're trying to identify purposes. But I think we just got to do a better job of identifying all these things and making sure we get that information out.
I mean, what I honestly can't tell you, I can tell you what services we can do, but days of the week, how many hours, we can't plan that far in ahead because I don't know what's going to happen with COVID. COVID is always going to be our first priority, first.
That may change. But I'm saying as far as on a typical timeframe, if you can use it for schools and different things, like you had a staff that could go around daily to use it if you weren't using it for COVID, which is the number one priority.
Right.
At this point, those type identifiers help us to show the taxpayers something's going to be utilized, even if, you know, we had to use some staffing that to man that unit for some purpose, so many days a week, every, you know, whatever that it looks like to where it's just not sitting in a parking lot. That, that's what the questions we're getting. So that's where we need your help.
And I, I agree with, with Commissioner Haupt. It's, you know, from the, the standing, we got to make sure that it is, I don't want it to be profitable, but, you know, usable. But, but my biggest concern is, and it always will be, is, you know, you're scheduling, you know, this, this one, this one, this one, it's in the shop. Then you're, then you're behind because you already scheduled these three and now it's in the shop. I can promise you, I know from experience, these things stay in the shop 30% of the time and I don't care if it's under warranty or not under warranty, it's still going to be in the shop. So they're, they're just notorious. There's too many moving parts. So you need to realize that if, if you've not had one, I mean, I'm telling you this, this is experience. You got to, you got to realize that there's, there's many days it's in the shop.
I'm just saying from my perspective, I'd like to see you, if we do it to, to, even if you had to add some staff, I'd like to see you have the staffing to where you're not having to pull them somewhere else. They're, they're the mobile staff that, where possible, you know, to go out and use this thing if we invest in it, to make sure it's being used somewhere every day. Because I think they last longer if they are in use somewhere, sitting somewhere.
Yeah, that's.
The more you drive them, the more you use them, I think.
Sitting hurts them more than anything. It does. And that's why so many of them aren't in shop, because they don't realize they're broke until they go get in it.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, you guys maybe have talked about that, additional staffing to man that, you know, I don't know. But I'm just saying from my perspective, if we do it, I want to make sure it's used without pulling your people out of the building, you know, that they could be doing their full-time deal, right? Because I think that's part of your problem is you guys have been stretched and pulled a lot of different directions and doing multitasking throughout this period and, and done a great job. But to, just like Teddy, you know, we've got at some point, make sure you guys are able to have some time off and to, you know.
This is a, this is a long-term investment.
Yeah, right.
You know, and I, I think while we may have priorities that are exigent right now.
Right.
Your long-term business plan involves personnel allocation as well as, you know, your maintenance issues going forward and how we factor that. What, what can we look forward to as far as the annual operational budget that we're going to have to commit to?
It's just going to be difficult to give you revenue not knowing, are we going to be doing mass vaccination clinics or?
Revenue is, you know, it's sort of baked into just what you did, you know, you're, you're going to be doing what you determine is most needed and most efficient in terms of getting services out. So, and, and this isn't one of those things where you're trying to figure out, you're not charging for this, except for those services that you're entitled to charge for.
Right.
So if you can get, we do need a sense of what maintenance costs are going to be. And that's something that the manufacturer or the other end users that have had them, that have this particular engine or whatever, can give you some indication of. And I think an explanation of what MedMax funds are. These are funds that are restricted in terms of their usage, that they're, they're not coming out of our general budget. They're not a grant that just comes in and are completely fungible. So it would be helpful, I think, to explain the origins of that and our appropriate uses, the restrictions we have on that.
Okay.
Good, this is great.
Thank you for all your work on it though, so far and all you, you guys are doing. Please continue to thank your staff for everything.
We're definitely going to need the representative because I don't know what more we would get other than what we've shared with you as far as some of the specific mechanics and probably their engineer too.
Right. Thank you for everything you're doing, Jane.
Well, if we're going to, I assume we're going to be continuing this meeting until the 30th. So we'll just hold this matter open until the 30th when we're discussing ARF funding.
And I'll be glad to send a specific question or two by email. That way you can kind of know what I'm thinking and I'll be glad to get that to you ahead of time.
Yeah, if, if we have specific, specific questions, let's get them in so that we have an efficient process.
Absolutely.
Something where they get blindsided.
Right.
Yeah, basically what we just talked about.
Okay, the next item Ms. Henson has as well, and this is a request from the Health Department for approval of Budget Amendment Number Seven and to expend $115,000 from the Division of Public Health. Agreement Addendum 361, reopening schools, school health liaison. Ms. Henson?
Okay. We are asking for approval for $115,000. This is a budget amendment for funding that's flowing from the CDC to DHHS to us specifically to hire or to contract with a school health liaison, a registered nurse that can work closely with the schools. We do have an RN that we contracted with. She started last week. She has a master's degree and I am training her to assist our LPN to respond to school questions and concerns. I get numerous parent emails and calls. I'm training her on the school toolkit and also to be able to address childcare issues and concerns. And we frequently. And we frequently get new guidance. It's our job to make sure that guidance is shared with all the school systems, the charter schools and the private schools. Seven, two of our school districts, three charter schools and two of our private schools have opted in the DHHS-sponsored testing program. So we'll be working closely with them as they report positive tests to us. Any particular questions?
Questions?
Basically, this is just the, this revenue is coming from the Division of Public Health.
Yes, CDC COVID funding.
Right, that's what I was thinking. I just wanted to make that clear because some people listening may not understand that. I know it's a needed position for sure.
Any other questions, comments, consent?
Consent.
Thank you. Again, Ms. Henson has the next item, and this is a request from the Health Department for approval of Budget Amendment Number 8, to accept and expend $39,900 budget revision for the Division of Public Health Agreement Addendum 466, advancing equity grant.
Okay. We are asking for approval for $39,900. Again, this is CDC COVID dollars funding through DHHS, and the goal of this is to address COVID-19-related health disparities and advance health equity. And Norma Rife in our department will be leading this initiative, and we will make sure that equity is integrated into all of our services and resources. She will be developing an internal multidisciplinary work group as well as a community equity advisory committee. An equity plan would be established and going forward, we would be ensuring that that continues in all of our services. I think we really do already do a great job at engaging the community particularly, I think will also allow, will benefit from that.
Any questions? Consent?
Consent.
You.
Thank you, Jane.
Thank you very much. Jane, could you stand by? I've got a couple of quick questions for you. Just not right this minute.
Oh, okay. Okay, the next item is a request from Tax Administration for approval of the August 2021 refunds and releases, and there are no Commissioner names on this list.
All right, what a relief. Consent?
Consent.
Thank you. The next item is approval of a resolution of the memorandum of agreement between the state of North Carolina and local governments on proceeds relating to the settlement of opioid litigation, and I'm going to defer this to Ms. Valdez to present this to the Board.
Before you, a resolution that was presented, has been presented to all counties in North Carolina, for the sake of those in the public that aren't aware, the county entered into litigation several years ago, it's probably been three years now, regarding the impact that the opioid epidemic has had on the county and engaged national attorneys to assist us in that litigation against manufacturers and distributors of opioids. And it's been some time coming, but there is currently a settlement with three distributors and one manufacturer, and those are named in the resolution, that will be funneled through the state. And this has been a long process, but the resolution that's before you is the work of a joint effort between the NCAA, the Attorney General's Office, and then a group of five county managers, five commissioners, and five county attorneys from the 100 counties in an effort to form a memorandum of agreement as to how settlement funds would be distributed to the counties and the state. And this is, this resolution is asking for your support of that memorandum of agreement that would funnel settlement funds, up to 85% of the funds that North Carolina receives, to the actual local governments, to the counties instead, and then the remaining 15% to the state. This, the memorandum is essentially the same form that was presented to the county. We've added some language because there's still a pending matter as to how the attorneys will be paid. And so the resolution shows your support of the memorandum of agreement with the option for you all to rescind that approval if the attorney fee issue is not reached in your favor. And this is the first step of several. The settlement agreement has now been, or within days, to the state, to each state Attorney General, to then get approval from each of the counties. So this is just the agreement between the counties and the state as to how that funding will be distributed. There are further agreements as far as the actual settlement that come to the state and to the local governments that will result in that settlement actually occurring and that funding coming. And that funding will come to the county over an 18-year period. And based on initial numbers and the settlement amount, that's approximately $13 million to Iredell County over that 18-year period. And that calculation is part of what's in the MO, part of the memorandum of understanding.
And does that include the municipal?
It would hit closer to the 14 when you had the municipal, the incentive that's provided by Mooresville signing on to it. And I am not certain what occurred at their meeting last night, but my understanding was that they intended, at least the manager and the attorney intended to ask for approval from Mooresville and support that approval of the MOA. So I heard, I have not heard back yet, but I assume that that's, that that did occur? You're taking your.
I don't know, but I will check between, between this meeting and the 7 o'clock and try to confirm that.
Okay, great. All right, any questions? We've talked about this several times.
Can we do this at 7, this particular piece? I just think it's informative to the public to know what we're doing. People ask us all the time because they see it and hear about it. So I just think if she could just do a brief.
Say all that again.
Yeah.
Had a good warm-up. Okay, we'll hold that matter open for the 7 o'clock hour.
You know, we did this to help with revenues and treatment of the people in this county and the state. So I just think the more we can update them on what we've been doing in the process and what we're moving forward, I think that's beneficial.
Well, and on that point, I'll try to remember to say that the 7 o'clock, but the point of the settlement funds has been that it can only be used to abate the problem going forward. It cannot recover damages that the county suffered for dealing with the epidemic thus far.
Right, thank you.
Nor is it a global settlement.
Correct, there are other parties still, other defendants that still need to be resolved.
Right, thank you.
Okay, the next item is an update on the Iredell County Transportation Master Plan, and Mr. Todd is here to provide this update to the Board.
Good evening to the Board. The transportation plan, I know I've come and talked to you before about it, but wanted to kind of give one more update. And really, we're looking at probably your second meeting in October for the consultant to come back and give more of a formal presentation, be a little more in-depth than what I've got tonight, where tonight's more just an update. Apologize for taking a while to get the hard copies of the report to you. That turned into be a bigger endeavor than I thought. I thought it was going to be a simple hit the print button, but not the case with that document, the way it was laid out. So enjoy the reading there. For anyone else, it is available on our website to view that way as well. And there's about 66 pages just in the main document, and then there's an appendix with about another 66 pages. So I tried to boil that down to, I think, five slides, just to keep it somewhat brief. But the plan, again, this was a plan to look at Iredell County, had not been done before at the county level. The state had done similar plans in the past, a lot different, though, in reality. Over the last few years, the jurisdictions within Iredell County have put transportation plans in place, but there was that missing piece, and that was the county's jurisdiction. So, you know, the focus of this plan really is those areas outside the municipalities because they've recently done stuff. We did not need to spend money to reinvent or reanalyze anything that they've already done, but focusing on those connections between the jurisdictions and also those areas outside of Iredell or along the edges that are often overlooked. And the plan was kind of broken into or divided into five categories. That included identifying priority intersections, interchange projects, priority corridors, priority active transportation projects, priority transit projects, and what we call it amendments to the Comprehensive Transportation Plan, which is through CRTPO, which is our Regional Transportation Group. So the first thing I'll discuss is the intersection. So with our project technical team that was made up of individuals from the jurisdictions, Statesville, Troutman, Mooresville, Davidson, Lake Norman Transportation Commission, ICATS, through that group, we identified over 45 intersections that should at least start being discussed, intersections, interchanges. Seven of those that we identified were already funded and nine were already being studied by others. We took those, the consultant took those through a screening process, and that was looking at a lot of data that's out there, you know, your crash data, your fatalities, existing conditions, the land uses, the zoning, if it was what was on a freight corridor, and other screening process to narrow that list down. Obviously, we don't need to spend any time or money looking at a intersection that doesn't have a high traffic volume. It's not going to score well through the process and needed, even though it might have been identified through the PTT, it just wasn't going to score well, so therefore it didn't need to carry on. So those were screened out. I think we were left with 13 priority interchanges or intersections, and those are shown in the map or Figure 14 within the document. And I won't identify those individually, but you can look at those. The other aspect of the plan was identifying priority corridors, and for this, our focus was on north-south connectivity, east-west connectivity, access to the airport, access between the jurisdictions, economic generators, freight routes, and key alternative routes. And coming up with this map, we did work with the Economic Development Group. We also had a public engagement survey back, I think it was around February of this year, talked with businesses to find out routes that they were using, their alternative routes. You know, we asked some specific questions where their routes they were using as alternatives because the primary routes they really want to use were full. So that's where some of these come from. This does overlap with other plans, some of these that are identified. And with these, what the consultant did was they identified cross-sections that are shown in the plan of what these corridors would look like going into the future, whether it's a two-lane, four-lane, et cetera. And in doing so, that was one of the more difficult parts of the plan, when you start looking at the corridors that connect the jurisdictions, because each jurisdiction has their own vision for what that road's going to look like. So trying to, trying to come up with something that was going to work. Those cross-sections are all based on NC DOT cross-sections because they're going to be the ones that end up maintaining it. It's not like with your city. Sometimes they get a little more elaborate on their cross-sections and do different things than what's in the book with NC DOT. So we tried to stick with the options laid out by DOT for those. The next was the active transportation, and again, existing facilities was looked at, connections between jurisdictions, existing plans, residential density, existing pedestrian generators, safety. Those are all the things that went into helping identify the active transportation priorities. And then that included multi-use paths, sidewalks, and bicycle infrastructure. And I think 17 projects came out of that process. The next was to look at transit. And this, and the whole plan overlaps with the Central Island Council of Governments' Connect Beyond project initiative. There's definitely overlaps with the plan. They were interviewed by our consultant because that plan was being developed at the same time this one was, and of course, it's wrapped up or wrapping up at the same time as well. So as far as I've seen, there's no contradictions between the plan. They actually complement each other, it seems. We'll be continuing to look a little closer at that to make sure that there's not any missing pieces or contradictions between them. But as far as the transit, you know, there's recommendations for transit corridors, nodes, facilities, routes, park and ride lots. And again, ICATS was involved with our process.
I think it will be important to go ahead and specifically reference the Connect Beyond study so that, because the point of this, at the end of the day, is to be able to present competitive projects that will score well and be funded by CRTPO. That's what gets roads built. And the, I think this will place the county in a much better position. But the more that you can reference a regional effort, the more it just piles on as far as the ability to score. So just because there may be no conflict or they're complementary, I think that needs to be made explicit.
And our plan does specifically reference the Connect Beyond in multiple places throughout, so.
Okay.
The connection is there, and we'll look, and if we need to make that more clear, we certainly will.
Yeah.
The last kind of division of the project is looking at the county on the whole, and what Chairman Mallory is referring to is the funding of these projects. And to get funding, you have to be on that, the project has to be identified on the CTP, that Comprehensive Transportation Plan, again with CARPPO. And the CTP is essentially a wish list, and currently, the CTP in place has a lot of roads in the county identified as existing. Some of them are identified as needs improvement. So this plan, we're able to dive back into that and make sure that the CTP that's in place, see where it was missed, see where things were missing in it. So this, from this section of the plan, has specific recommendations that need to change with the CTP. And this is something that, this is probably our first task, once this plan's adopted, is to move forward with CARPPO on amending the regional CTP to include these changes. We've got, that's our first step. We've got to get that done before really applying or submitting for any funding out And this, you know, includes, it's going to include your highway, your transit, your active pedestrian. It includes it all. That was kind of it for as far as the maps and just talking about the plan being divided into those five categories. The plan does go into funding resources and funding strategies. There's also 24, I think it's roughly 24, implementation strategies for us to follow. So it really, the plan really gives us a good, it gives us some direction that we've not had in the past. There'll still be a lot of things that will end up coming back before this board when it comes to the funding. When it comes to the funding mechanism, there's a lot of funding resources that are listed in the plan, but they do require a match. So, in the past, we really hadn't brought projects to you, so that's something we will need to discuss, if that is something the board would like us to move forward with. Then that is, this plan will help us do that if we decide to. There is, currently, we have a, another open, I'll say, public comment survey on our website. We're asking for comments to be submitted by October 6. Most of those are kind of a follow-up from what the comments we had received back in February of this year. We've sent that out and shared that with the individuals that had replied before and other avenues as well, so hopefully, we get some good feedback from that. And again, the consultant will be coming back. Our plan is that second meeting in October, but somewhat, that depends on what type of feedback and comments we get as we wrap this plan up.
I have one question. I don't know, maybe you already know about this, and it maybe doesn't completely pertain this, but I've gotten in the past month five phone calls about an intersection, and it's Highway 70 and Triplet. And it's, you can't make a left turn onto Triplet, so they're turning, they're using Knox Road, Knox Farm Road, and that's been paved for years, but when you get to the bridge where it turns into Rowan County, it was never paved till a couple of years ago. And I was down there last night, and when you drive down that road, I mean, you can bury your truck in some of those holes because everybody's diverting because they know they can't turn left, big trucks. So, is that even on this plan at all to take that back? I know what was put in 15 years ago. Somebody screamed loud, and they put it in, and of course, they changed it. They put it in, I don't know if you were involved then, they put it in, they put it high, ambulance couldn't come across, so they came back, redone it. We spent a lot of money on that intersection, and a kid did get killed there, but people get killed every day, and, you know, we don't, we don't do go to that extent. Now, we're chastising these people down here in their road because we're sending them to Rowan County to come to Iredell County. Do you know if that's on that list at all?
It's not, you know, and that is, yeah, I'm definitely familiar with that one. I have heard about that one, and it's probably something we could look at, maybe talk with DOT, but I'm not sure that that one is not specifically in the plan.
It's a simple fix, and, you know, it's now everybody knows it's a stop sign there, you know. They, I guess, I don't remember exactly what happened at the time, but it was new stop sign put up, it's kind of like the four-way stop at Triplet and Oswald Amity. It took people a long time. I ran it four or five times, so I know it takes you a long time to get used to it, but anyway, just something to put on your radar, if you don't mind. That's all I have.
Matthew, thank you very much. You know, this is a fairly dense, couple of documents to read through, and has a lot of arcane engineering and process-oriented information that, you know, a lot of people would look at and say, like Commissioner Brown, well, you know, why don't they just fix this intersection? And the way you get those intersections fixed, we've got a billion dollars roughly worth of funding through DOT that are chasing $8 billion worth of projects. So, there is a prioritization process, and it is one of the most Byzantine, arcane, difficult processes to really wrap your head around, but it's the method by which funds are equitably distributed throughout North Carolina.
Right.
As opposed to the old way of doing business, which was if you were within 50 miles of Raleigh, you got all the roads built you wanted.
That's why 85 looks good.
So, you know, this is an equitable way, but everyone is competing for a limited number of dollars and projects, and the cost of projects are just skyrocketing in terms of the cost of right-of-way, the cost of construction. There are limitations as far as the ability to preserve corridors legally that have changed over the last couple of years. So, you've really got to have your stuff together when you're going to the technical committee that takes a look at these projects and scores them. So, packaging our projects in a way that scores well is the whole purpose of this drill. And so, and showing how our plan, just as our municipal plans nest within our county plan now, our plan should nest within the regional approach of the CRTPO and the other divisions. You know, we've got two divisions of the DOT that we deal with that are not necessarily in the CRTPO. We can compete for dollars within the division and regions, and you couldn't have designed a more opaque process for the average commissioner, you know? So, we rely on the expertise of our staff and translating what the needs are that are communicated by people and businesses to then translate that into a way to get the funding and get them built. So, appreciate all the work that your committee and your working group did, which was a group from all the municipalities that had produced their plans, plus a number of other stakeholders. And I think it certainly answers the mail. We'll have to dig a little bit deeper in there, and the best way to probably understand the import is to, you know, raise those issues, just like Commissioner Brown is a certain intersection and all. But while there are certain projects that for a lot of people seem like no-brainers, when you look at congestion and you look at the other factors that drive the scoring process, if they just don't, aren't in the area, they're just not going to score well. And as Commissioner Robertson used to say, you know, the days of just letting the state build roads and us being hands-off, there may come a time when to get a particular project done, we may just have to pay for it. That's a big expense that we've never really thought about doing, other than having a matching portion. But to score well, we'll have to put more dollars towards it because we're competing against other stakeholders for building these roads and other, what do they call them? Facilities, bike pit, whatever. Okay, well, thank you very much, and.
Thank y'all.
So, we're going to have the, the next meeting, we'll have the, or what day in October? Was the second meeting?
We're shooting for the second meeting in October to have the final plan to come back for a presentation with the consultant.
Okay, well, we probably need to do that at the seven o'clock hour so that everyone can hear a bit more about what's going on.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Todd. Again, this item was just for informational purposes for the board, so there's no action needed on this. The final item for the administrative matters is Item 8.13, and that is approval of Budget Amendment Number 10 to receive an expand $82,108 in foster care funds for one-time unrestricted financial assistance to qualifying current and former foster youth. And Ms. Smith is here to make this presentation to the board.
Well, good evening.
Good evening.
And thank you for adding social services to the agenda. We received notification on Friday through a webinar late Friday that these funds were coming down, and received confirmation on Monday. So, we are excited about these funds, these one-time funds for our adult foster children. I just want to share with you some of the things that my staff have already done. They are geared up, they are making their outreaches and contacts with our adult youth, and just some of the things I thought would be interested for you to hear. We have several at Mitchell Community College, one in nursing, one in cosmetology, and one getting a degree, associate degree in art. We have a graduate from UNC Greensboro, and she is really wanting to use her money to get her CPA. We have one at Appalachian State, and she has aspirations, she's a senior, to go on to law school. We have one that is a supervisor, who is a supervisor in a huge plumbing company in another state, and he was so excited to receive these funds. And some of the things that they're looking at to do with these funds is just, it just touches your heart. Several of them want to be homeowners, and so they want to add this to their savings for their homes. Others say that they want a reliable vehicle, so they're going to use it to purchase a reliable car. Some of them have children, and they see the difficulty now that they're working and having to pay the bills and they can't qualify for daycare, to use it to pay for their daycare. And then some are just going to save it. So, we are asking for your approval, this wonderful fund.
Man. How many eligible young adults do we have in this category?
Well, I have nine right here that they were able to give me as I walked out the door, and they were contacting about 18 more. But, you know, our money is only $82,000, and for the adult youth, 18 to 20, it's $2,500, and from 21 to 26 is $5,000. So, we'll probably get there. They've already obligated $30,000 with these nine. So, I probably have a lot more than we can serve.
A lot of these children just were never adopted, and so they've been, in some cases, bounced around foster environments. Other cases, they were fortunate enough to have long-term relationships with a foster family.
And about 12 of them are in extended foster care, and so they receive a monthly stipend to, you know, live out on their own and to do whatever college or work, whatever they need to do.
If you have the 18 more or 19 more, if you run out of money, do you pick and choose some to take out, or do you limit the amount of money?
Well, right now, we're going to do first come, first served. And as they contact us back, because we're saying that this is a one-time amount of money that we would like to give them, it's unrestricted, and we're leaving messages, and we're trying to cover all our bases. Now, the state said if we had more than the allotment that we receive, then they, you know, they're going to look at all 100 counties and see how they expand it. And if there's money left over, we can bid for that.
I don't think there's going to be any leftovers.
I wish so, you know?
Well, it goes without saying that you won't get more if you haven't spent it all.
That's right. But we make sure we spend everything that we get, so thank you.
Appreciate, yeah. Thank you for sharing that and making the dollars come to life. Sometimes it's just on paper, but you make it real with heart. Thank you so much.
You're so welcome.
We see it in your smile, that, what you do with.
You see my passion.
It shows, it shows, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Consent?
Consent.
Thank you. This concludes all the items for the administrative matters.
Mr. Norman, I didn't hear your, maybe. Okay, thank you, sir. Running down the balance of the agenda, there are no announcements of vacancies or appointments to boards. Does anyone want to anticipate any unfinished business, any new business? It is a public comment period, which will be limited to three minutes per individual. And the sign-up sheets are downstairs, and we'll take those in the order of folks who've signed up. County managers report a preview?
Just two quick announcements. First, this Saturday is our much-awaited public sector job fair, so I hope that we have great participation and a lot of people come out. We have a lot of special things planned to showcase our departments and let the community know about positions that we have that are open. So, that is Saturday, September the 25th, from 9:00 a.m. until 3:00 p.m. at the Signal Hill Parking Lot. So, we're really excited about that. And then just a reminder, we've already referenced before, that the ARPA funding workshop is scheduled with the board on Thursday, September the 30th, starting at 9:00 a.m. in the Human Resources Conference Room. And we will be recessing from this meeting for that meeting on the 30th.
That's at 9:30?
At 9:00.
9:00.
9:00 a.m.
All right. Thank you. We'll now move to a closed session for purposes of discussing economic development pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143, or 318.11 Subsection A4. We'll be going to the South Wing Conference Room and returning here for the seven o'clock hour.[1642.51]